I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Stokes County Board of Commissioners for Monday, September 11, 2023, and we'll start with the invocation, if you please stand.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for any blessings you've given us. We thank you for your support as we work to do the county's decisions and make hopefully wise judgments for our citizens. We ask a special blessing today on the folks of families that were affected by 9/11 at the various locations. We ask that you give us strength, guidance, and wisdom as we go forward in your most gracious name, we pray.
Next item on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we approve the agenda, which we normally do next, we would like to have a moment of silence to commemorate the 9/11 anniversary. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for approval? Make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
My favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, agenda is approved. I would note before we go forward that Commissioner Cox is out of town tonight, and she informed us ahead of time she would not be here. So the next item on our agenda is public comments, and I think we have four folks signed up to speak, and the first one is Norman Lynch.
Like we talked about before, my name's Norman Lynch, live in Pinnacle, and I've already been approved for the camping ground. I have 25 spaces. And Darren Creed, he was the septic engineer I used to design my septic tank system. And I had Bynon Associates, they did all the engineering for the site plan and everything. What I always wondered is, before I spend $173,000, that's my last quote I got, and that was a little over six months ago, what are the chances, and I know it's kind of far-fetched, like we talked about, of septic being run to Pinnacle? My son, he'll speak in just a moment, I'll let him speak about his situation as similar to mine, but you know, you hate to spend $173,000 and then in five years, you know, the septic, you know, run to Pinnacle. So I know it's kind of far-fetched, you know, septic coming to Pinnacle, but it was just on my mind, and if it's on your mind, you better talk about it when you can.
Have you reached out to King to see what their plans are?
No, haven't, no. But like we were talking about, the water comes within a mile of me, city water, so it stops right there at the end of Old Winston Road. So, and you know, it would help the Pinnacle exit right there, it would help kind of build it up and let it take off. And my son, he has some plans for some businesses he's working on, but it sure would help. That's all I've got to say, but I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you, Norman.
Austin, come on up.
This is really short, so I'm not going to take up too much of your time. I'm Austin Lynch.
We're not really loaded tonight, so you don't have to...
Well, it's short anyway. You probably remember me from November, I was here to have a property rezoned, the highway business on Old 52. The reason I'm here tonight is to make a case for running septic to Pinnacle. I know you might not have the final say. I have my own personal reasons for being in support of septic in Pinnacle, but I also believe that it would be good for the town and Stokes County as a whole. First of all, the septic system for the shopping center I had planned was quoted to me at $120,000. Even after spending this money, the shopping center would still only be limited to retail only, which would cut the number of businesses that would be able to operate there. Because of this, at this time, my development plans are on hold. Pinnacle is one of only two towns in Stokes that has access to Highway 52, the other being King. Pinnacle exit has a large amount of my developed plans surrounding it that would be a perfect spot for restaurants, a truck stop, or any other business catering to highway traffic. There are other similar projects going on in areas with no highway access, for example, Meadows. As you all know, King is expanding rapidly, new shopping centers and housing developments are being built quickly, and I believe, given the close proximity to Pinnacle, that Pinnacle is next. The only thing holding development back is lack of septic. I believe this is a serious issue for businesses looking to invest money, and I know a project like this would not be cheap, but given the amount of new development that this would kickstart, I believe it would pay for itself quickly. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Austin, appreciate it. Our next person is Candace Loy.
Okay, I'd like to address the board. On March 27th, Mr. Tommy Reeves spoke to this board and recommended that the Animal Control Advisory Board be dissolved and a new board appointed. His reasoning was that the new animal control director could not name all of the board members. This board took his recommendation without consulting anyone on the Animal Control Advisory Board for the facts. Animal Control Advisory Board members had to reapply along with any new prospective members. As long as I have served on the Animal Control Advisory Board, we have always had made recommendations for new board members with approval from this board, but in this case, our board had no input into the appointment of new board members. In appointing new board members, the Board of County Commissioners did not follow the bylaws that were set forth when this board was formed in 2007. In the May 8th Commissioners Meeting, Chairman Morris said there were nine board members when the bylaws clearly state there are 10 members. In addition, it was stated that there is one animal rescue representative when the bylaws say there are two. I had remained in one of the animal rescue positions, and another member should have been appointed in that second position. There was a qualified person that applied for this board that clearly stated on their application that they foster for an animal rescue group. This person was not appointed to the board, and this position remains open at this time. I had served on this board for nine years until my resignation on August 31st. The County Commissioners have never shown an interest in what we do or intervene in our work. After March 27th, this changed. Four of our board members were removed from the board, and three new board members were appointed. New board members did not submit any references or resume, so we still do not know their qualifications for being selected to this board. On May 18th, I sent an email to each of you asking for clarification on the criteria that was used in selecting new board members. I have yet to receive a response from anyone on this board. The proposed animal control ordinances brought before this board this spring were a continuation of past meetings that, once the word tethering is mentioned, the ones breaking current county ordinances come out in full force. The same thing happens each time tethering is brought before the board. No action is ever taken by any past or present Board of County Commissioners, thus leaving animals still living on chains. The bathroom and hallway comments that were overheard about the proposed ordinances were silly, unnecessary, or either laughed about them, or made the comment that they hoped that they never saw this on the agenda again. This demonstrates your attitude towards animal welfare in this county. Your board has the capacity to make a change, but we have only seen a backslide in the last seven months instead of progress. People that have never stepped foot, worked, or volunteered at an animal shelter should never have any final word on animal control ordinances. These ordinances not only would have put a stop to the cruel practice of tethering, but also tighten ordinances on female animals outside getting pregnant and overpopulating the animal shelter. This county is in the dark ages when it comes to animal welfare, and that is because we have leaders that let citizens that do not work in this profession dictate their actions. Most of you are not aware or have been misinformed of the eye care program that I have been an administrator for, for almost nine years for this county. In 2014, the Board of County Commissioners approved for me to operate this state program that provides spay and neuter services to low-income families in Stokes County for their companion pets. I have administered this program with no pay, no staffing, and no funding from the county. The program is funded by donations that fundraisers, fundraisers for the nonprofit that I also operate as a volunteer. To date, we have spayed and neutered 1,278 animals.
Go ahead, Candace, you can finish.
Well, Sonia's here, she's going to let me have her four minutes.
Okay.
We have spayed and neutered 1,278 animals that would have never been spayed or neutered, thus preventing unwanted puppies and kittens from entering the animal shelter. We have spent $46,000 for these surgeries. This money was reimbursed by the State of North Carolina at 83 to 100%, so the $46,000 invested would have otherwise cost $130,000 without participation in this program. This has been an invaluable resource for a rural county that has no spay and neuter clinic or any support otherwise. But I am so disillusioned with what has happened with this administration this year concerning animal welfare, that I will be canceling the contract between this county and Spays Stokes for the eye care program. With the animal shelter, why do I feel that this county is taking a step backwards concerning animal welfare? The answer would be what has taken place at the animal shelter recently. The animal shelter here has always been an inadequate and poorly-run facility. Since 2004, I have been in and out of the shelter for years rescuing animals. I have seen some things that have kept me up at night, to the point I had to stop going into the back to look at the animals. The lack of care those poor souls got was barbaric. The terrible things that some of these directors have done, they should have been prosecuted for. Our Animal Control Advisory Board pleaded with previous county commissioners to fund a new shelter for years. It fell on deaf ears. Sir, our board took it upon ourselves to build a shelter. Seven years and $450,000 later, the Friends of Stokes Shelter was built thanks to many fundraisers and generous donations. In 2022, a new director was hired that actually had experience in working with animals. We started a first-ever volunteer program. This was the first, because when I attempted to start one many years ago, we were not welcome there. I have known Lori Shore for 15 or more years. I have been on animal hoarding rescues with her and known the outstanding work she does. Lori is one who will and did dedicate her life to the animals. There are many days she would work 17-plus hours in a day. She poured her heart and soul into that shelter, and on July 21st, she was wrongfully terminated from her position as shelter supervisor. Why would a supervisor that euthanized 131 unadoptable animals in a year's time be terminated when 559 animals were euthanized in 2022? Numbers alone show that she was doing her job. How can that be justified? I have worked tirelessly for the animals in this county for over 20 years, with not much progress to show for it due to the lack of county support. The disappointments and defeats that have been dealt to the animal supporters in this county have become too much to bear any longer. I cannot stand by and watch the animal shelter return to the state that it was prior to June of last year. All I can do now is to pray for all the innocent animals in this county, that they not ask to come into this world only to be abused, neglected, and live at the end of a chain. Thank you.
Thanks, Candace. Son, you gonna speak? She got, used her time? Okay, great. That ends our public comments. The next item on the agenda is comments from managers and commissioners, and I'll start with Mr. Menon Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to thank everyone for being here. Wish we had a bigger crowd. This is a light crowd tonight. I'm sure several of the people that would have been here were at the Stokes County Fair in King tonight. I think that starts tonight.
Right. It's set up tonight.
Okay, set up tonight, okay. And, but everybody that's watching us on livestream, thank you for taking time out to take a look at our governmental business, and it's the biggest thing on my heart today is the memories of 9/11. I think probably everybody in this room just about is old enough to remember where they were at on 9/11. I know I was a principal of Sandy Ridge Elementary School, and I got a call from Garland Connor at 8:35, 8:45, and he said, "I need you to get into the library and turn the TV on." When you're responsible for 250 to 300 kids, and the parents are seeing this, it was just a very emotional day. I'll never forget it, but I think Mayor Giuliani and the group did a tremendous job in New York that day, taking care of business. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Menon Hall, Mr. Chairman.
Thank everybody for being here in person, and then also, of course, tuning in on our streaming on YouTube. It's very sobering every year when we look back to what happened on 9/11. I think it forever changed the world, at least on our side of the, on our side of the ocean, of how we thought and how we reacted. And the one thing that did happen that I thought was really good was that everybody came together, no politics, didn't matter, rich or middle class, we all came together to stand for America and to help. Of course, I always stand up for public safety, and it was another example of, as the buildings were on fire and ceilings were falling, floors were falling, you had firefighters, police officers, paramedics, again, running into the buildings, not running away. We had people, I know firefighters, and I know some policemen that weren't even on duty, that automatically came. Some met their, met their death helping people that were trapped, while others met a very painful and long death from the chemicals, hazardous material that they ingested, and it took years and years, they died, and then there was years and years of fighting a bureaucratic federal government so the families could be compensated. And then out of that outrage, there were some foundations that really stepped forward, and to this day, they step forward to help firemen, paramedics, police officers, families when they're, when they're killed, or very disabled and in the line of duty. So every, every year, it's very humbling to me when I think about what happened to our country. I'd like to address a little bit with the, with the situation with the sewer and your business. As we talked before on the meeting, I think it's very important, and I'm glad you, I'm glad you all came, I appreciate you coming, but it shows the importance of strategic planning. And so I know that, I think all of us on this board agree that we need, do need to kind of do some research and get an idea kind of what King is doing, and kind of get a master plan of, of what we want to do in terms of structure, like sewer and water, and with the growth. I know it's not an immediate answer for you, it's not going to help you tonight with some answers on, you know, what, what you should do, but I promise you that, that we will take a look at it, and we will, we'll see where, where it goes. I can't, without, we'd have to get our, get our Public Works Director involved and just take a, take a look and see what some long-range or mid-range plans would be, but thank you for all coming in, and thank you for wanting to invest in Stokes County with businesses. I think that's very important, especially you're already residents of Stokes County, and I think it's very important for, for us to support you all. So hopefully we can come up with something, it's just a little bit of time to do that, but thank you for coming in, and we'll do it. Also want to put out a little advertisement that, for the Farm Fest, it's going to be this Saturday in the Francisco area, it's the old school, it's going to be from 9 till 3:00 in the, in the afternoon, it's going to be music all day, there's going to be all kinds of crafts, food for sale. It's the first year since 2018 or 2019 that they've came back on to one ground, to one place. But, but there's a lot of vendors, there are communities of Northwest Stokes, they put this on, they're a 501(c), they're a group of people, they work tirelessly to bring benefits to, and to recognize the tradition of agriculture, their old farming, they work tirelessly. So if, if you want to see what kind of, what it was like tying tobacco, old tractors, kind of tractor parades, stop in, the event's free, you can come in, and there'll be plenty of food and drinks, and I said, there's music all day, and then, of course, there'll be raffles there. I hope to see you all there, that's all I got.
Right, thanks, Commissioner. Mr. Lewis?
I'd like to welcome everybody. I'll warn you, I got two parts to my comment. It kind of changed as the evening went on.
How long is each part?
If I need it, I'm going to take care of time.
Okay, all right, well, we got plenty of time.
On 9/11/01, the United States was left a scar that will be there forever. On August 30th, 2023, Stokes County was left a scar that will be here forever. Our prayers are with the Fag family, and something needs to be done. We, as adults, parents, grandparents, we need to stop the bullying ourselves. I see it every day, everywhere I go. So how in the world do we expect our kids to do any different? I mean, Facebook is the playground of it, and other internets, and it just needs to stop. I've witnessed in the workplace, I've witnessed it in meetings, et cetera. My late mother had a saying, gosh, she said it all my life, and every kid she had and every great-grandkid she had, "If you have nothing good to say about anyone, keep your mouth shut." And I've heard her say that a thousand times. So we need to start practicing that. Okay, before the meeting started...
Can I interrupt you one quick second?
Yes.
I just got a vote, there's no video out. Can somebody check that?
Yeah, because I want this on there. Before the meeting started...
Hopefully I'm wrong.
Amber handed me my mail, as Commissioner, sometimes mail comes here. This is from a thank you card from the Friends of, excuse me, the Friends of Stokes Shelter. I'm going to read it to you. Since I've been accused, it starts out at the top, handwritten, "Thank you so much for attending our cookout on the 26th of August. We look forward to seeing you. See your next visit. Emily Burgess and Tanya Palmer. The Friends of Stokes Shelter kindly acknowledge your recent donation," and that's from me and my wife, "for the Stokes Shelter mission is to provide a better future for homeless pets in Stokes County, and your donation will help us to continue the adoption center, blah, 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 but thank you for your support." So I'm not a big jerk, as everybody lets on. That's all I got.
Amber, is it working? It may just be the person who sent it in.
No, RIT said that. It is recording, but it's not live streaming. He's trying to figure out what it's not, but either way, it'll be up in the morning.
As long as it records.
Yeah, it's recording, so either way, it'll be up in the morning.
Okay, that's fine.
The live streaming portion of it's not working at the moment, but he's working on it.
Okay, great, that's no problem. You have comments, questions?
Well, I just welcome everybody here, and I guess welcome everybody watching when you get to watch it from home. I just want to echo all the Commissioners' comments about 9/11 and all their families. I will never forget that, of course. And I did want to thank Tori Mave and Eddie McGee for all the hard work they did this past weekend for the Stokes Stomp, and for Mayor Janet Witten and their council for putting on that parade. I know it got rained out kind of towards the middle of the day, but it came back strong from what I hear. I left around lunch right when that hit, but, but it was, it was good for the portions that people were able to come to, so I appreciate all their hard work. I know it takes a lot. And the Arts Council as well, not just Tori and Eddie, but also all the volunteers. I know it takes a lot of work from all those individuals involved, so I want to thank them.
Okay, thank you very much, Amber. I'll address a couple issues too, the sewer issue, just trigger of thought by you guys coming tonight, I appreciate you coming. We've worked with another guy on some of our projects here in the past that we haven't worked with in a while that just might have some insight into this that others don't have, so I'm going to contact him this week, and I'll get back to you guys, just got your number, whatever, so, just in case he has some insight or some, he's a pretty strategic thinker in this area that might be able to help us down the road. So I'll do that and commit to get back with you this week. On the 9/11, I actually lived in the Capital Region during that attack. I lived about 10 minutes from the Pentagon, and, and it was some event to go through when you were in the middle of it. My wife was actually close enough to the Pentagon to feel the vibrations of the plane working whenever it happened, when the plane came into the Pentagon, so it was real up close and personal for us. It's something we must never forget. I was watching this morning as they were reading the names of all the folks that were killed there. I hope they do that in perpetuity forever, because I think it's really important to do that and to recognize it every year. Never forget the thing, the thing that you, that we notice the most, it seems kind of strange, but if you work and live in the Capital Region, what you always hear, if you're in that local area there, you hear that airplane's taking off out of National Airport every five minutes, just one after another, they do that all day and half the night. And whenever all the airplanes stopped coming out of National Airport, and you didn't hear that noise, that was such a routine thing, you really knew something, something was going on, so. Just, you know, a lot of uncertainty with our security these days and the way things are being handled, and I just hope we don't lose sight of what happened back then, and need to learn lessons from it, and continuing to, continue to recognize the, these people that lost loved ones there, they'll never get over this, you know, it's something they do, they probably, we do it September 11th, they do it every day, I think, so, that's all I have to say about that. Next on our agenda is conflicts of interest statement. For moving forward, does any board member have a conflict with any of the items on the agenda for tonight, or any that may be perceived as a conflict of interest? I figure you did. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I get a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion, questions, anything need to be made? Second, any discussion, questions, anything need to be moved off of that? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Yes, unanimously. I said aye too. Okay, the first, uh, item on our discussion. Good seeing you guys.
Nice to meet you guys.
Thank you. The first item on our discussion agenda tonight is the Board of Elections, uh, building renovations. And I think Glenda and Perry are here to talk about that.
I know how to clear a room, don't I? Good evening, Commissioners. It's good to be here.
Good to see you.
I have a couple of things to report on, but first and, and the one listed on the agenda is in fact the, uh, Sosa County Elections Alteration. That we took bids on that August 24th. So we want to kind of report on that. As you remember, the bank building needed a few things being done to it, mainly closing in the drive-through area to create more storage for election machines. That was kind of the biggest element there. And, uh, also to do that, we had to build walls a little stronger than normal and raise the elevation from the drive-through where cars were going through, that the finished floor is up about six or eight inches higher than, than what it is now. So those are the kind of things that were happening with it. Uh, I will read to you the contractors that bid it and also let you know after the number that there were some other costs that we're going to have to complete the building and, and we'll let you know what those are too. But we actually invited four bidders. It was an informal bid. We invited Colt Simmons Construction, Garanco Incorporated, Hugh G. Strickland and Marshall Brothers Construction. And taking bids, Colt Simmons Construction of Mount Airy was the low bidder at $128,700. Garanco was second at $147,450 and Hugh G. Strickland was third and last bid we received at $221,510. Uh, Marshall Brothers looked at the job, but they did not submit a bid. So just want to make sure everybody understood that. Uh, you will remember that Colt Simmons Construction has done quite a few projects for the county. The maintenance building up the hill was one of their projects. The scale building at the landfill was another, and they also did the green box at Pinnacle. So they've done quite a few projects for the county and in all cases they've done an excellent job and very little changes or anything. So we always feel comfortable with them doing the work. And it is our recommendation that you award that to them. The couple of things that, that are other costs that we're going to have on this project are kind of internet and fiber. There's a decision, I guess, whether to bring it from here over to the bank building or to create a new connection. And Glenda's sorting through all that, so I'm not going to mess it up any further than that.
Glenn is sorting through it.
Okay.
But I'm asking to do it.
Making me nervous.
Glenn is going to work on that for us.
But there's, I guess, a lot of different forms that have to be filled out if you do a new service rather than extending the one from here. So that's, that's what the issue is. It's not really a cost or anything like that. Uh, the other thing is security, that there will be a new security system put in the entire bank building. So, so that'll also improve things there. Uh, we anticipate that the job will take about four months to complete. And that will put us well ahead of the primary season. And that was our intent was essentially to get them in, situated and comfortable before the primary and then have it where the voters will know the new place to go. So that should all work out with plenty of time. Other than that, on that particular project, that's kind of what's going on with it. Uh, I will say I am glad that you decided to buy that building because that is turning out to be a lot less expensive than having to build a whole new building. So, so that was a very good move in my opinion. That's what I've got on the elections alteration. Do you want to add anything, Glenda?
No, I agree whenever anything, um, in it's up to you all whether if we want to move this to action tonight or whether we want to wait to the next meeting. I don't know. It gets a rush, but yeah, however you want to do it, it's fine.
We need to go ahead and let the tide.
Yeah, I agree. The sooner you act, the sooner we start.
Yes, that's true.
Do you have any qu- questions, Keith?
No, I, I, I guess my, minor stuff with Linda reviewed.
Oh, okay. You got any questions on it? Any questions?
No, I've been up.
Okay. Um, what's the net savings going to be over what building, the new building? You guys are rough order magnitudes on that.
Well, it depends on what we do with the internet connection and, um, kind of the other things. But right now, just so you know, kind of where we stand right now, um, after purchasing the bank building and everything, our, um, remaining balance is $230,607. So that's not taken out what we're going to contract with, with Colt. But after that, we will have the alarm system, which, um, and the security system. I'm ranging that just based upon the other ones that we've done recently, um, at some other locations. Somewhere around 8,000. That's probably a little higher. And then, you know, there is a few other things that we are going to do for Jason that he had asked for, that we felt we could do cheaper for us to do it than to run it through the contract for the contractor. So, but I still think that, you know, we'll have funding left. That's our goal is to have funding left.
About 600K?
Yes, yes. That's what we started with.
So we're going, we're like coming in under 500 then?
Yeah, somewhere close. Cause the, the, what we spent to date was, and that was the purchase of the building and the surveying fees, things we had to do there was 366, 893, 25 is what we spent to date. So, so.
Plus it could have cost more than 600 to build it too, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Without a doubt. And all the architectural fees and all that, also doing it this way considerably less, so.
Okay, super. I'll have anything to guys on that one.
Okay.
I think Kerry's going to give an update on the courthouse.
If it's okay, report on courthouse.
If you got one, I'm going to ask.
I'm sure I'd give you my head.
That's fair enough. And I'm going to start with the schedule. Uh, right about this time is when I wanted to receive bids on the project. And as you can tell, I didn't come to you with bids tonight. So, so that's part of the schedule. For the first time in 40 years of doing this, I had to wait in line to get the engineers to start working. And that's a post-COVID, something going on. I don't know what it is, but I actually had to wait in line. So that caught me by a little bit of surprise. Uh, but I can report the architectural drawings are at 90% complete. So we're just about finishing up on them. Civil engineering's at about 50%, structural engineering's at 80% and plumbing, mechanical, electrical is at 40%. And they've got three people working full-time on it right now. So that's why we're going to try to get things done as quickly as possible. We also have an AV consultant and he's waiting on the electrical engineer also. He's at about 50%. So everybody's, as I, as we speak now, everybody's working on it every day. So we're going to do that until they finish. But I would have rather have bid around now. The one nice thing about the delay, the only thing it does, it gives me a little more time. And what I'm doing is going back, back on everything we've done and looking at areas where we potentially can save some money. So I'll give you just a simple example. Wall finishes in the public area. In my original, kind of what I thought I was going to be doing on those areas was have wood paneling like you see behind you going up a portion of the wall. And then go with drywall and paint and things of that nature. Well, I'm looking at also doing, uh, might be an alternate, might be base bid, but actually doing instead of wood paneling, vinyl wall covering that'll last quite a long time. And part of that comes from kind of seeing, say, for instance, we're over at Surrey County's building and that's what they have in their public areas. And that building's about 15 years old. It's doing quite well. So those are the kind of things we're going to look at. Uh, door hardware, all of a sudden has taken a jump where a mortise hinge for a door. Retail's at a thousand dollars a door now. So cylinder lock on some of these offices will be good. It's about one-fourth the cost. So, so that's what I'm doing. I'm going back and just looking at every decision we make and trying to make sure we do things that A) will last and, and perform well, but possibly to save money. Cause the closer I come or become under budget, the happier you'll be with me. So, so that's what we're trying to do.
Steel prices are dropping.
They are. Thank goodness. But for everything I find dropping, I've got something on my other hand that's going up. So, so, so basically it still makes me a nervous wreck until we get bids that get the numbers that we're after. But we're do, we are doing that. Uh, the other thing we're seeing throughout the industry is the larger size projects over 5 million are slowing down a little bit. And ultimately this little delay might actually bring us more competition, which means a lower price. So my fingers are crossed that that's working for us. I would have hoped they would have come down more because of the interest rate and what's going on, but they really haven't. So that's what we're going to kind of watch and see. Uh, second thing, the soil investigation was performed by Terricon out of Greensboro. And actually we didn't really encounter any soil problems. Now they missed, you know, where the rock outcroppings are right at the surface. So they didn't drill right into rock and say, well, we didn't find anything and here's your bill. But the, the one thing to understand, and this is what, what I always tell everybody, uh, that boring is about a two-inch diameter hole going down into the earth. And typically we're going 15 to 20 feet with it. So it's a very small picture in a very few places of what's going on. So in the budgeting, I still have that 70,000 figure for rock. And that's just mainly for trenches for plumbing lines and some things where if we can't find a pathway to get them in without taking some rock out, we're going to encounter that cost. Now, if we're very lucky and don't have any of the cost, that's a good thing because that puts us a little ahead of the game there. But the investigation, there wasn't any really bad soil or anything that would cause us to spend a couple hundred thousand extra pulling things out and putting them back. So that, that went pretty well. Uh, third thing is the parking lot that we're planning on doing at the helicopter pad. We've got to do that before we start building because we're taking out a good portion of the parking lot that's down mostly kind of sheriff's folks and some social services users. We're taking out a portion of that. We lose, well, it, it fluctuates every day how many spaces, but it's probably on the order of 10 or 12 spaces at least. So what we're trying to do is create more parking for the county vehicles up there and displace vehicles from doing the construction and creating a place as close as we can to park cars. And what we plan to do is to have the, we're going to actually bid it, but the county's going to use some of the ways they do parking lots and things to try to save some money. We're also doing that as a separate project, just like we're, we did the, the bank. So that we can get it done before we even bid the project and when construction starts, it's already there. So we don't have a phase where you're paying the overhead of a contractor to do that piece of it. It's already there. So that's another cost-saving measure to, to look, that we've looked at, that we can actually do. So again, we're trying to find ways to do things in the order we need them as cheaply as possible and also as the byproduct of saving money. So, so that's kind of what we do. Uh, hopefully in the next two to three weeks, I'll have that out for bid. And again, just like this, we'll come report what that number is and get your approval for that. We're hoping a lot of the bank leftover money can pay for a lot of that too. So that could happen. Main construction, we're looking at really two phases. There's, first thing we do after we've got the parking lot, we go build the addition to the building and build that entirely complete. Then we move everybody over who goes into that building from the existing building into it. And we also have the one new courtroom that becomes operational at that point. Then the second phase are the renovations that, that we're doing in the existing building. And that gets done, kind of, there'll be kind of two, possibly three sub-phases to that. The one thing we promised the courts is that we'll always have two courtrooms going at one time so that both district and superior court can function the way they do today. Naturally, while we're under construction and renovation, there'll be things that will make it a little more difficult than normal, but we're going to try to minimize those. But we did promise them we'd always have two. So we've got to do this kind of, well, one of the new ones, one of the old ones going, one renovated. And then when that one's done, we flip flop and get that done.
What does this do for security?
Pardon me?
Security while the construction's going on.
Uh, during, during construction, the, it, it's not horrible. But we basically have all the men who are working have to have kind of their identification and, and everything so the bailiffs can see them. Uh, the way the, the construction is, if we kind of limit the use of some of the facilities in the new part on the lower level that will eventually come online, we can kind of keep everybody in the new courtroom that is on the upper level. So we've got a very small area to kind of, kind of keep track of while the bottom of the building's being done. So it's, it's manageable as far as that goes. So we, we just have to, everybody wants to use all these kind of new things we have. But we have to tell them just take it easy, that we've got to get the whole thing done before we can get into everything. But, uh, that's another thing. I've got a little more time to work on that too, as far as, as figuring out what goes on there. We still figure, and hopefully my worst case is two years to complete everything. I think we can possibly beat that, but a lot of it's the luck of the draw on the type of contractor you get. Some contractors are very aggressive and will do this in a year and a half. There's others that it would be pushing them as hard as you could push them to get it done in two years. And that's just the nature of, kind of, building for public and the bid process and not knowing who's going to be doing it. But we're, we're excited about it. It's going to be a terrific building and everything's going well. We haven't really had anything. Only setback I have is just having to wait in line. That's been it. And the judges have been very helpful to us with anytime we have a request for information or need to get in the building, they make it very easy. So just, and our report's all good. So any questions? Well?
Ronnie, you got any questions?
No, uh, I'm sure Perry will deliver us a wonderful bid with as little money as possible. What'd you say, uh?
I got, yeah.
Was it 8.3 or?
Well, it's, yeah, it's 8, 8.5, but if you want to say 9.5, I'm good with it today. I sleep better.
I just, I have to give you a hard time, Perry. I mean, you had that discussion at night.
I know. I made a real mistake there, but.
Okay. I forgive you.
I hope it's not. That would be even better.
I'll pass it on to Brad.
Right, any comments? Yeah, just, I appreciate, especially you, you look at all the different angles and try to get everything kind of in, in order. And then, uh, I think, I think that shows efficiency and of course, any money that we can save is greatly appreciated since it's tax dollars. Yep. So, thank you. Thanks, Perry. Great value on both projects. Looking forward to getting them done.
Appreciate it.
Good seeing you again. And I think our next item on the agenda is, uh, some, uh, things from Glenda. Surplus tax foreclosure property.
Before you start on that, uh, I want to make sure that the two-year schedule, the date that we set for this to be done, if they do not meet it, I want liquidated damages to the contractor. We're not going to sit here like, no, we're Stokes proud. I'll just say it.
But yes, we usually put it in ours. We did for the, when we did the jail, but then we did that in there too. But they were real good about, they got finished, but it was in there. Cause he was getting close to the wire there. So, but yes, we will.
I'm, I know rain days, weather days, but just slap, don't like it.
Agreed.
I've got some bold letters there.
Did. I made myself a note too, so I can write on my other paper. I usually bold and highlight those. But, um, so, um, I'm coming to you all because I've received, um, actually two separate pieces of property that we have received, um, offers to purchase. The first one is on Forsyth Line Road and we've received an offer to purchase for $1,825. Um, I've spoken to Richard and, and this is the minimum bid that was posted online for us to, to receive by the, the rules and everything that we have in place. Um, this one is a little lower than normal than we usually would do. But, um, in Richard's file, the documentation showed that this piece of property, um, at one time, it didn't have a date of a year, but the statement on the tax card was that the property would not perk. So that's why you're seeing this one a little bit lower than the next one you're going to see. But, um, Richard thinks that this is a fair offer and so we would like to ask for just a consensus for me to start the upset bid process for this one.
I think we have a consensus for that. Okay, good to go.
And the next one I have is on Blackwell Road and, um, this one is kind of, um, a little bit different situation. Um, the offer to purchase on this one is $6,500 and, um, it is the minimum debt bid. We've had several calls on this one. We've had several calls on this one, but no one wanted to make that offer of the minimum bid. So we received this one last week, or actually, yes, last week, and we were able to get it on the agenda for today. So this... I've also talked to Richard, and he's very pleased with this offer 'cause, like I said, we've had several offers that kind of didn't pass Richard to get to you all 'cause they were very low. And so, and I would just like a consensus for this one to start the ten-day process also.
You have that consensus? Okay. You have it?
Okay. Thank you. I'll come back to you all when we finally get the bid process.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Glenda.
You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda is quality life wellness in Stokes County. And Commissioner Chandler, I think, will present on this one.
So what I'm hoping to, I guess, engage in conversation and with to get all the other commissioners on board to have our county manager kind of take the lead with this and get with all the entities that deal with public health, public safety. For example, tell a little bit on, you know, what Keith mentioned, too, with the bullying and what happened last week. Is that in Stokes County, we... There's nothing that's put together by any entity that shows really what's going on in our county. I think it's very important that the citizens are aware of what their tax dollars are paying for. And they also will help show them that there are things going on in Stokes County. It's not like any other community, but there's a lot of people in Stokes County that if you talk to them or ask them questions, they don't even... Really don't even think we need a sheriff's office. I mean, they complain more about their driving around in brand-new cars and sitting here and sitting there. And we have crime in Stokes County. We have crime. Now, you can't go on any database in the state because we don't report crime here in Stokes County to the state or to the federal government. Haven't done it for several years. So if you're a business that's looking to invest here or if you're a family that's looking to relocate in Stokes County, I mean, one of the things you do is look at the schools. And the other thing you do is you look at public safety. You know, fire department. What's their ETA on fires or rescue calls? They wanna look at crime. They wanna look at how many rapes there are or how many armed robberies, how many burglaries. If I leave my house to go to work, what are the odds that someone's gonna kick in my front door? We don't know. We can't find statistics on that. Almost every other county in the state of North Carolina, you can find statistics. I think the last time we submitted any statistics to the state for the UCR was either 2017 or 2018, a partial. Now, I understand that I guess the technology might be hindering the sheriff to transport the data. But in my world, you know, you can do it by hand. But it's gotta come out. So what I would like to propose is that our county manager get with the sheriff's office, get with, of course, IT because I think IT needs to be able to come up with a way to either to push in the numbers that need to come, that we can decide a later date and time on what we're looking at exactly. But the health department needs to be involved. Overdoses, suicides. I mean, how many overdoses have we had already so far this year? If you look around and have to wait for a year to find out only because the state mandates the health department do stuff, you'll be a year behind. There's data out there from the health department, how many overdoses they have. I know. I've seen it. I just... We need it, and we need to be able to push it out. DSS, we need them involved. It's very important to know what, you know, how many... You know, what are the child abuse cases? What are the... Or if it's sexual assaults with juveniles, with the minors. We need to know, or at least highlight... We hear a little bit about the lack of foster families because we need foster families 'cause I know we pay money every month to send them outside the county because we can't find foster parents here. I think it's very important that also on the committee that led by the manager, we need to have our 911 director. Because if the sheriff, for example, if the sheriff can't provide statistics that show how many break-ins, how many rapes, how many murders, then we'll pull it straight from CAD. And we can sort it, and I let that up to IT to figure out, you know, how to do that. But it's... Every other agency does it. So I'm sure that we should be able to do it as well. And we need the... Also, we'll wanna look at the fire department. So the number of calls that come in monthly total. We can also break it down on a sidebar, you know, if you wanna go into individual fire districts. But I think it's very important that we know the response times of our sheriff's office, of our paramedics, and also of our fire departments. 'Cause this is gonna be very important as it leads into our strategic planning that we're gonna be doing later this year so we can get an idea of what are the type of crimes that are prevalent here in Stokes County and what programs need to be addressed so we bring the crime down. So it's another tool that shows where the money is going, what programs, if they work. And if they don't work, then we need to try something else. But it's for all entities of public safety. And I don't... I think the school needs to be involved a little bit, but I don't know exactly yet what we need to pull. Maybe Commissioner Mendenhall can help with that. He would have insight of what it would look like that would give us warnings or a trigger of, hey, this, you know, we got a family in need or an area in need. So that's basically... And I don't know what we'll call it. I mean, I'll leave it to somebody that can come up with, you know, a better brand name or something. But it'd be a monthly thing that'll be on our Facebook page. And it'll tally, and people will advertise it. They can go to it, and we'll see live data. We won't have to wait a year or wait four or five years before we get to know what's going on in our communities. That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Mendenhall, you have any comments, questions?
No, I think that's very needed information. As Commissioner Chandler started out, he addressed some of the factors that people look at as they make decisions on mobility, if they're going to move from one place to another. And let's face it, if you watch the news every night for flooding and leaving California, New York, I can't name all the states that have so much crime. I mean, I think one state you can bust in and steal up to nine hundred and fifty dollars as long as you don't go over nine fifty-one. They don't even prosecute you. They don't bring charges against you. That's in California, I think. And, you know, so people are moving to states like... I think the top five states that I heard the other day were Texas, Florida, Tennessee, North Carolina. And this state, they lose me, but...
South Carolina.
Yeah. We're one of the top five, though. And, you know, so... And as they look at, they pull up statistics on the computer, and they do look at things like safety, schools, et cetera. And I just think that's a good idea. So kudos to you for that.
Right, Commissioner.
I don't understand why this ain't required by the state. How can they put out numbers if they're not getting them?
Well, they're encouraged to, you know, to submit. And almost everybody does, but just a few that...
I think you ought to call it what you named it. And I think you need to add the elderly.
Yeah, good point.
It's a big issue, especially for me and Ronnie.
Me, too.
All of us. But it's just like Paula give me an update on her programs, and she's killing it.
My gosh. And while on that, that's what Stokes County should be. She don't care that it's... She works for the city of King, but she cares about all of Stokes County. And we're one county, and that's the way it should be. And she's a fine example of that. But yeah, I think they'll all be included, too, because it is a problem of their needs.
Yep.
No, I'm good.
The one thing, just from a branding standpoint, we've loosely discussed before is implementing quarterly program reviews. At some point, and I think maybe this might factor into that as being quarterly reportable. I think on quarterly program, you might want to more often than not. It should be rolled up at least, I would think, quarterly program reviews. Which we'll work out with Amber, how we're gonna execute all that one of these days here.
Three or four other things she's doing.
Okay, anything else on that topic? Okay, the next item on our agenda is the cooperative extension MOA document updates. We put this back on discussion, I think, because it was a lot of information presented last time, and people hadn't had much time to look at it. But I found everything that Emily presented to be of my support. So if you guys have... We need to move to action. Is everybody good with it tonight?
That's up to you all. She's not in any hurry 'cause, like she said, it's not due for a while, but...
We'll just make it action next time. But if you guys have any additional comments for Amber, she could pass on to Emily. You good with what was presented?
I'm good with it.
I'm good.
Okay, good. Action for next agenda. Next one, I think, is the animal control advisory board appointment. And Amber, you're gonna talk about that?
Yeah, today I was really just gonna introduce it and just that way you all could be thinking about someone that you may want to put in that position. I think Candace spoke in public comments today, and she had already said it, but she resigned from the animal control advisory board, from the animal rescue position. So that is a vacant position. She did, when she submitted her resignation letter to me, she suggested two other individuals who had applied before. That did not get on the last time we made these appointments. So I'm currently contacting, reaching out to those individuals to make sure they want us to keep their applications on file to be considered for this position again. But if there's anybody else you have in mind that might wanna apply for this appointment, just be thinking about that.
Okay.
And I know that... I will address what she said in the comments about the bylaws. I think for right now, maybe we just replace her just because I looked at the bylaws that were actually passed on to me originally from Candace and that were on the meeting back in April and May. And there's actually, say, one member from an animal rescue organization and nine members total. So I don't know if they've updated it, and that was just the wrong copy was passed to me when we did that. I don't know. But I guess for now, we'll just appoint that one, and then we'll let the animal control advisory board update their bylaws if they want to.
How can we reach out for people who might want to serve at this position? They don't know about it.
I think we need to put it on our website.
Mm-hmm. It's already on there. Yes, sir.
And what about maybe one week? And then the newspaper.
Okay. We can do that.
A lot of people read the Stokes News. It does. Go to our website.
Okay. And we can put it on our social media as well, if we'd like to do that.
Okay, that sounds good.
And then we'll just have it back on discussion at the next meeting for you all to nominate somebody.
Okay. Sounds good. Anybody have any other questions or comments on that one? Okay, this next one is Stokes County Agent Planning Committee appointment. And Winona Sands has submitted an application for one of the vacancies on this committee. So we need to open the floor for nominations for her?
Uh, yeah. Thanks.
Nomination, nominate Winona Sands for this Stokes County Agent Planning Committee.
Okay.
If nobody else has any others, you can just close the floor for nomination.
Yeah, and anybody else have one? If not, we'll close them. Y'all wanna close the nominations in?
Yeah.
On favor, say aye. Okay, so we've nominated Winona Sands.
And then we'll just move it to action for the next meeting, and I'll post it on the website, of course.
Okay, that sounds good.
But this is one of the committees that have several, several vacancies left. So still, if you know anybody that's interested, they'd be more than happy to have people on there. 'Cause I know that, just from us talking about it at the last meeting, she was actually watching the last meeting when we talked about it, and that's why she applied, so...
Okay.
That's why I mentioned a while ago, how do we get the word out about these different things?
I just happen to know Winona. She was a teacher for me at Sandy Ridge. She taught second grade for me for three years. I was principal there.
So you got this posted on our site?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's been posted on the appointments page on the website for, I mean, as long as I've been here, I think, honestly. And they've always had vacancies on that committee for some reason.
Maybe you ought to plug these next time you're on TV.
And they all shelter with...
I'll try to...
They're in prison.
Yeah, I'll try to fit it in.
You've done a good job, by the way.
Well, I appreciate it.
The other thing is advertising in newspapers is expensive. I mean, it gets out to a certain group, but you kinda have to...
Well, and another option is, you know, I know Terry watches our meetings, and she attends, so sometimes she puts things in there for us that we don't have to advertise for. Yeah.
That's the way to go.
That's a better way.
Yeah.
You're doing a great job.
That's the way to do it, but...
Yeah, so I'll reach out to her. I know she actually sent me an email asking why it wasn't live streamed. So I told her it would be there first thing in the morning. Yeah.
All righty, I think that concludes our discussion agenda then. And the next thing on the action agenda, we have our financial advisory agreement from Doug Carter Associates. It was presented last time. We just need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. And then we have a short closed session, I believe.
We have one more item.
What was that?
The Board of Elections Building Renovations.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We do. So that was the set of the bid, right, from...
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead and make a motion on that one for you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion as far as the bid process went for the Board of Elections Building Renovations that we award the bid to Colt Simmons Construction out of Mount Airy. Their base bid was one hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second. Are you any further discussion questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That passes. Aye, opposed, that passes unanimously. And now we have a closed session for Amber, if you'll read the rationale.
Okay. To consider and take action with respect to the position to be taken by the county in negotiating the price or other material terms of an agreement for the acquisition or lease of real property pursuant to General Statute 143-318.1185.
Alright, and get a motion to go on a closed session.
Make a motion to go in a closed session. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're in closed session.